...in order at 7:05. We stand for the Fledges Legion?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution, states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. I didn't think that this signal last night surprised me. I don't know about you guys. Anywho, and we have some potential flooding due to the ice in the river. Coast Guard's got two cutters and maybe a third on the way and trying to bust it up so it doesn't back up anymore and hurt our houses in north part of township in North Elgin Act. So having some couple of roads, the waters over the road, so they're all okay. Roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Joanne Shirkey.
Here.
Cindy Valentine.
Here.
Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristy Hilton.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Sandy Kufa.
Here.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda under new business three. Please department new hire part-time dispatcher.
Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next we have bills payable, entertain the motion.
Make a motion for bills payable in the amount of $170,000. 170, 13, $170,000, 75 cents.
Okay. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, they have motion, all kinds of support. Make the bills payable somewhere around $170,000.
75 cents.
And 75 cents. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, roll please.
Joanne Shirkey.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. Ernie Bryson.
Yes.
Excuse me. Kristy Hilton.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Sandy Kufa.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes. Okay, motion passes. Next we have public comments, is there any public comments? Please come on up. Oh, you gotta go that way. Just give us your name and address.
Good evening, Ernie. My name's Darrell Levine. I live at 7389 Cocko Isle. You and I spoke on the law enforcement issue and you said you were going to speak with a lawyer. I just wondered what came of that or what happened to you.
Yeah, I did and our attorneys, in fact, I sent the email to the rest of the board. They're not too, they don't think that we would win if we took the order to court. So if you want, I can tell you more about it and I can even forward you the email, so.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. Yep, no problem, thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, consent agenda, entertain the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent of the draft consisting of the board meeting on February 4th, 2019, and synapses. Check reports and there are no notices, no communication, and no requests.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next we have the supervisor's report, bear with me. You missed me last time. I did go to oddly enough, a flood mitigation meeting a week and a half ago with the US Coast Guard was there, Army Corps of Engineers, St. Clair County Emergency People and others. I'm not the guy from the Corps of Engineers that actually does the projection of water levels in Lake St. Clair and St. Clair River and all the lakes and they do a six-month forecast and talked to him for quite a bit and he basically says if the water level is average spring this coming year, we're going to be four inches higher. So we're going to have probably, we're going to have higher water than we did last year. Last year we had high water. So what I did, actually, I haven't gotten the confirmation yet, I requested some sand from the Army Corps of Engineers. Every year they dredge ahead of Russell Island, they head of the South Channel, they dump it on Dickerson Island. And I'm requesting some sand so we can make it available for sandbagging. We can get the sandbags. I'm trying to get them to dump a load on the mainland here and one over on Harson's Island where the county road stone pile is. And actually, I have a site on Russell Island, too. But still waiting to hear from them, but I'm going to be telling people, you gotta protect your own property and we'll give you the tools and everything we can to help you. But yeah, more than likely, we're going to have some higher water. Also, at that meeting, I'm not fond of the program, but its manager, Michigan State Police, was a FEMA program. If you have a house in a flood plain, FEMA will buy it from you at fair market value. I'm sure there's an argument of what that might be. And it's their flood mitigation program. And what they'll do, they'll come and tear it down and just make a private property you can never be built on again and it'll be, FEMA will own it, the US government will own it. And they also have, and I'll tell people this, but I don't think it's that great of a deal, they have a program where they'll pay for 75% of the cost to raise your house if you're in a flood plain. And it takes about a year, a little over a year to get approved. They will raise it two feet above the flood plain level, but I can't remember off the top of my head how high that is. But you have to agree to always have flood insurance on the piece of property. And if you sell it, the new people, it's attached to the deed. So the new people, if you sell it forever and ever, you're going to have to have flood insurance on there. Now granted, you're going to be up higher and it will be less than it would be now, but they're going to get that 75% back. But you're going to, that is out there, too. And if anyone needs any information on that, get ahold of me and I can get you going on that. I hear there's a lot of paperwork and it takes about a year to do, but it is out there. I just want to mention that so far the last couple of weeks, our tariff service has been getting better. Hopefully, it's not short-lived. And we did receive our green recycling bags, we're selling them in the office. The supplier had a problem with the running them and it just took about two months longer than it should have been. But we have them, we're selling. But yeah, they're light green bags, you can use them instead of the green bins for recycling. A lot of people like that because if they're gone for, if they're just here on the weekends, you can throw their recycling out and you don't have to worry about the bins being out the road or wind blowing the stuff out of the bins and blowing them around. So they are pretty popular, so we have those now. Excuse me, did enter pick up today? Yeah. It's a long way they're scheduled. Yep, I know schedule this week. Thank you. Yeah. FEMA, we're having an open house here for FEMA to discuss the new proposed flood plain maps and we have some of them all around here. It is February 26th at 4 o'clock. I've talked to a number of people who are going to be here for it. Originally, well, originally it was in January, but they moved it back to February 26th. And what's going to be at 5 o'clock PM, it is at 4 PM. And I just want to mention, too, the DEA is working on the Fruit Road Bike Path, looking at different costs and engineering options. Looks like most of the, a lot of the boards consensus of filling in the ditch, even if it costs a little more as opposed to putting it on the other side of the ditch. But that's going on and, let's see, what else? The county did a gap analysis for the Bridge to Bay Trail System. And where we don't have a trail right now, what we're missing, I put the maps in our package of Clay Township and Elgin Act. And basically, most of ours is either entail making the sidewalk wider or expanding the shoulders of the road. And the idea from this is there's a lot of grant money available. There's a Charles Wilson Foundation, which has really spent a lot of money in our area, mostly up in Fort Hearn, but they want to make this happen. And so with a little bit of luck, we'll be able to get a big grant to connect Fort Hearn basically to the bay and by bike and walking pass, so. That was done, let's see. And Wednesday, February 20th, we're hosting a public meeting here with the county Blue Way Trails folks. We're going to talk about our blue trails around here in the area. And we're going to set up a guided spring paddles, it's going to be May 30th. I don't know whether it's going to be yet, it's going to be in one of our official trails, we have seven or eight of them. That meeting's at 7 o'clock, February 20th, from 7 to 8:15. So this coming Wednesday. And I just wanted to mention, too, the Pearl Beach Lions did cancel their Winter Fest. I'm actually talks with them and more with the Sturgis for tomorrow for really expanding our, the North Channel Sturgeon Classic in the fall and make that a bigger event. In fact, I'm meeting with those folks tomorrow night about making a three-day event with a big tent and utilizing our park for quite a bit. And I told them, it'd be nice if we have a fishing tournament or fishing thing here if they actually serve fish. So they don't have the fish tournament, where's the fish? But I have discussions with them actually, yeah, tomorrow. Did want to mention, I met with Comcast this last week about getting our Channel 6 meetings a little better quality. If you're watching me on Channel 6, you're going to like, I'm sorry for the quality of the video, but we're working on that and a little bit better technology going forward. Had a pretty good meeting with that. And I also mentioned to them, we have a few roads that we don't have Comcast service on, like versus model road. We don't have Comcast. And so I'm actually trying to get a quote, what it would cost to do the whole roads and then, sorry Sheri about this, and then seeing if we could do a special assessment to pay for it and spread it out and so they would have, you know, that service available. I talked to a few people, even that have, that just have vacant property, it would increase their property values, especially if they're building houses to home and what? No, you're not, eh, you know, it definitely makes it easier to sell. And I also did want to mention our ice skating rink, we sprung a leak in the cement, we think. So it's drained and we really haven't had a good ice skating, ice on it. We're going to have to seal the cement this spring once the frost is out and probably use the same stuff how we seal the splash pad, right John? And that's why we don't have a full cement pond right now. Cleanup day for Clay Township, we have first weekend in June, Saturday, June 1st on the mainland, June 1st and 2nd on the island. Still working on trying to get a, like trying to recycle here, but no luck yet. And I did meet with the lady who's the manager of the US Census. And they're going to start going around and trying to get organized to do count all the people in our township and we do want everyone counting in our action to look and hire some people to do the census. So if anyone's interested, I could probably get you a contact to the right people. And there's all kinds of recs programs going on, I'm not going to list them all, but if you're on Facebook, go to Clay Township Parks and Rec and like it and all the details are there or give us a call. That's all I have, thank you. Next we have a fire chief's report.
Good evening, chief's report, January 19th, attended one meeting, that's the Clark County Chiefs Association. General business was discussed. I also attended a two-day Excel training class. Attorney shut down, of course, in January for a couple of days, we did herbal operations, we took the mail across, took some medications across for some of the residents. And Station 2's air compressor was broke down, so we had to replace that, but it went in. And the construction on the fire station is complete, I did a walk-through, everything's been installed. I believe the bench is not there yet, but we are waiting for an inspection from the building department, which that should be sometime this week.
Well, thank you. Anyone have any questions for chief? Thanks a lot. Under unfinished business, assessing administrative assistant, hire Bonnie Campbell. I put a little letter in our package. I'd like to make a motion that we do hire Bonnie Campbell. I just like to mention, well, I'll go with, I'll just summarize my letter. Which I thought were the top two candidates, basically for my decision. And Ms. Campbell, she's, from the two candidates, she's got more education than the other top candidate and actually has experience working at our municipality for elections and elections experience, which helps, will be part of it. But they were very, very close, I will say. And I know there is some discussion and it could have been an obstacle. We're very, and believe me when I say this, we really want to do things right, just so we can guarantee the fiduciary integrity of our township. And there's questions if, we got, one thing they have to do is have segregation of duties. Not only is the person collecting money, is not paying money out type thing, it's called segregation of duties. We're wondering if this, the way this person has been working, you know, if there was a significant segregation. I do talk to the auditors and they said, yeah, actually, this person can take in money just as long as they don't have the ability to adjust someone's water bill. And so that has been corrected in our program and so it, there is segregation of duty and our auditors are all happy about that. And I just want to mention, too, this, this person, the first, this person's going to be the administrative assistant under our assessor for daily task counter work, feeling assessing questions. And as always, like all the people that are in the front office, their number one priority is taking care of the front counter. And so that also will entail collecting money and, you know, manning the phones, taking care of people's questions. Could be for assessing questions will probably be thrown towards this person eventually when they get in tune with the assessing department. And then secondary, they will be entering data for the utility billing and also helping up with elections. And this person will also be a backup for the department, the building department. In case, well, when the person in there asks, go to lunch, we got to cover that. And assessing works hand in hand with building anyhow, so it makes sense that it works that way. And like I mentioned, if any of the job description needs tweaking, we can do this after the fact and we'll probably be looking at that in a month just to make sure that it does need, if the job description accurately portrays what we want this person to do. And I'm also going to adjust the budget to reflect the position. Right now, this position, assessing pays for the whole thing. And although, you know, assessing function might be 50% or so, so assessing's kind of, their budget's subsidizing treasurer and clerk, so I was going to adjust the budget so the salary would be like 50% assessing and the money will be shared between treasurer and clerk and the building department, so. That being said.
Question?
Yes.
Did the starting rate change at all?
No. No, it's a union job and so it's governed by the contract we have.
Okay. What about the, in the job description, I believe that we have now the right candidate. I'm concerned about the job description, I mean, tweaking? I'm concerned about the budget adjustment, both of which said they could happen. I want to put it, I want to put that in unfinished business, so we're forced to deal with this sooner rather than later.
Well, yeah, we can put it in regular business, too. We can make an agenda item for the, you know, the meeting, the first meeting in March or the second meeting in March.
Well, I'm thinking through this, if the candidate accepts the offer and we hired based on our votes tonight, I want to set this candidate up for success and that, to me, that would be important. I don't want to change the whole rule after the candidate accepts the position.
The job description does say as needed for the building department, the clerk's department. Yeah, the only reason we would need to be kind would be for budget purposes, that they were doing more in the building.
Okay.
Like with just building and assessing and they weren't doing anything with treasury or clerks, then we would have to look at, you know, where we're going to budget it. But the job description itself covers any of the general front office duties.
Okay, so it's your belief it's vague enough to cover that topic?
Yes.
Terrific. Last concern is who this person reports to. Are we clear on that? Is this something that we need to address? Is it something that will be tweaked? Or is everybody comfortable with where it currently sits?
Currently reports to the clerk's office due to the utility building and the building portion of it, his building, Cindy Valentine also reports to the clerk's department.
If I can make a comment regarding the policy manual, that needs to be looked at. We're way behind the time we're doing the policy manual and the report, you know, who reports to whom is listed in the policy manual, that I believe, I would like to see us go over there and say, just kicking the can down.
But that's reflective of the union contract. That's stated in the union contract that any of these union positions report to the treasurer, the clerk, or the supervisor.
It is stated in the union contract?
Yes.
Okay.
Is that cross-referencing?
No.
I asked one, we can look at. Should be at least cross-referenced.
It is. Just to guess, and again, we need to, we take a look at that policy manual because it's way over the, I'm aware of that, that things come up and that's not on the top priority list, but keep it.
Policy manual's actually due to start being reviewed in March this year.
March this year, yes.
And we had discussions about that.
Okay, good, good.
Is it appropriate for you to change your motion, Ernie, to stipulate what Chris said about putting the?
I don't think we have to put that in the motion, I mean, we can just make it happen.
Okay.
To put it on the agenda.
Under unfinished business?
I would just put it in a new business because we haven't talked about it yet.
Okay.
So.
That's fair. Okay.
Yeah, that's fair, yeah.
Just so it stays at the top of mind.
Yeah, we don't need a made a motion to talk about something at a next meeting.
As it relates to this hiring, I think it's relevant.
Right. Well, like I restate my, I just have a motion that we hire Bonnie Campbell for the assessing administration assistant job.
Support.
And we have support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda, new business, congratulations Bonnie, welcome aboard. Under new business, we have police officer Dowell, we want to recognize him for outstanding job performance and perfect attendance, but he couldn't make it here. No, he couldn't make it here, so I'll entertain a motion, we postpone that till our next meeting.
I'm also going to postpone the addressing officer Dowell for outstanding job performance to our next meeting. Support.
Motion support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next we have, I got this letter from the county road commission, I got to find it. And they wanted us to have a discussion, I got it, thank you, on how they treat the frag mighties along the county road right of way. They, they've been spraying the intersection, well, you can read the letter, they've been spraying the intersections only and they want to know if we want to expand or they just spray all the roads for frag mites. So does the boards have, does the board have any feelings one way or another?
Does spraying work?
If it's done the right time of year, then they go and cut it, yes. Problem is that we're going to get, is some people like the frags and find their house for a buffer for privacy. And then I've seen once in a while, because they used to do all the roads, all the ditches. And then you might have somebody where they plant something else. And if that gets sprayed, it's going to get zapped, too. But it is the county's property, not our individual homeowner's property to defend them, it's the road right of way. You know, they got 66 feet wide, 33 feet from the center line on the normal road. So does the board have any feelings about that? What do you think, Mark? You're in real state.
I think it's well-meaned. I don't know how much money it's going to cost us, but.
Doesn't cost us anything, well, it costs the county roads.
It'll cost us.
I say, listen, do it not only for property values, but traffic and safety.
Right.
I did get a email from Chuck Miller.
Yeah.
His thought was on the matter of spraying the road margins, he believes the spraying of the road sides on Harson's Island should be expanded at all intersections and curves. Straight lines are not sufficient, especially in inclement weather and at night. He suggests that when the ditches and the canals border right of way, that the frags should be cleared to the shoreline of these water bodies and thanked me for passing that along because he's in Florida.
Okay. So he concur- So he concurs on having the, all the roads sprayed, or the whole road?
Yes.
Anyone have any thoughts?
What, what kind of spray are they gonna use? Same wronged up?
Yeah, it's glyphosate with, you know, they, the same one that everybody else is using.
Yeah, I would want to say that we make sure that we have proper notification when it's gonna happen, so.
Yeah, nobody's out there walking their dog and, uh. Oh, I'm sure they, yeah.
Well, I don't know.
I'll, I'll tell them that too. Any other more thoughts on that, or suggestions? Clay Township is ground zero for frags. I, I, there is a Sencox study, they, it's like 18% of our property in Clay Township is invested with frag minis and these.
Yep.
It's a chunk, chunk of property, so we're ground zero in the frag mining world.
When is the annual meeting?
What's that?
They said the, um, we're talking about the annual meeting?
The workshops?
Yeah.
Oh, that is the same day as our FEMA, and, um, so they're just sending me all, all the information.
Okay.
That's why they sent me this email. I, I'm gonna forego that for FEMA field trip day here.
I like the idea. I think if we can open up some of the right of ways, especially on some of the cross intersections, um, some of our intersections, we really, you have to creep up, and if you stop at the stop sign, you literally can't see the line a lot. You actually have to encroach beyond the stop sign to be able to peek around the corners, to see what's coming. And if we can alleviate some of that situation, and find a way to do that safely, I'm, I'll be all aboard.
Hundred percent. So.
You'll never get rid of the, you know, never get rid of the frag minis, but in critical spots, it's, it's a good thing.
And I'll, I'll also put on there, if they can use some judgment, if they see some flowers or something, that they click the switch, stop the spraying, so. It is an invasive weed, so.
What they, what they, the broad application will, will go everywhere, even if there's no signs of frag mines?
No, it's impound gold, and then they'll, they'll stop, 'cause that will kill the grass. They're gonna hit the ditches where the frags are.
Okay.
That's how I used to do it, so. All right. You're back. Are we good with that? We're good.
Okay.
Just wanna make sure before I press on. Uh, under new business, police department new hire, part-time dispatcher chief.
And I look forward to your board package. We're looking to hire Lori Mullen as part-time dispatcher. Lori comes with 28 years of experience, Boca Raton, Florida, which she retired out of, ended her career as a dispatch supervisor. Her whole background investigation showed nothing but high praises for her, and, um, much appreciation by the administration there for the years of service that she gave. Hard to find someone with these kind of qualifications, so we're looking for her on board. She is, Lori is originally from the Elginak area here. She did go to Elginak schools, and she's back home here and living nice and close, so.
I do. I just, I just have one question. Retired from Boca Raton and moved up here?
I know, are you nuts? Are you nuts?
How do you know something that we don't?
Yeah, I use a little Florida, so, I hear you. Any discussion or questions?
Chief, this obviously fills, fills a need. Do you have over there?
Yes, uh, actually, it's been one that we've had major for quite some time now. We're not finding any real qualified candidates, and we're not too much interested, so, as we said, and we've actually gone through a couple that just didn't quite work out. Dispatching is not for everybody.
It's an important job.
It is a unique position.
Tough job.
It is a tough job. It's something that requires a high level of discipline, as long, as well as a lot of multitasking. And it's, they don't get near the credit they deserve, I can tell you that.
Can we request, or can we expect some, some training to follow up on this meeting? And are there any certifications at the position?
Yes. With that, she has to become EMD cert, recertified here in Michigan, she, which is a national academy for it. Only thing with Lori is hers has lapsed. We'll get her all up to date on that. She'll come on board, she'll go through a field training program along with us, see how we, how we do things, which would be obviously a little different than what they did down there. Get her acclimated into position and leave that, uh, once she's there, then we, we run our own.
I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve part-time dispatcher Lori Mullen for the part-time dispatch position.
I'll support.
Okay, motion to support, any more discussion or questions? I don't know if she's gonna pass that psyche valve from moving up here. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Congratulations. Yes, welcome aboard. Think I knew some of your, um, I know a lot of Mullen's, so. Oh boy. Welcome aboard. Board member comments? Do you have anything to be?
I do. I want to give kudos to, like, what does the Elginak Community, Elginak Clay Community Foundation for the GATS BLA. It was a very fun event, February 9th. It was definitely the place to be. I was glad I was in attendance. It was a lot of fun. I want to congratulate Coach Looper for being Elginak's new football coach, and welcome Lori Mullen and Bonnie Campbell.
Mark?
I'd like to welcome Lori and Bonnie to Township. Good job. Plan commission, we discussed the Blue Horseshoe Project at Kobinski's Old Island. There's about 200 boat slip going in over there, but we're reviewing the site plans currently. I have some issues with it, but looks like it's moving forward. And the old Colony Marine Building, we have a site plan for internal interior redesign. That's it.
I too, I'd like to welcome Lori and Bonnie to the Clay Township family, and we're fortunate to have two people that are highly qualified for their spots. And also, the ZBA has meeting this Wednesday. We have two on the agenda, one that's on the island, one that is a piece of property on the island, and one that's over here on Lake, uh, Lake Point. So, yeah, setbacks, you aren't setbacks. Nothing real big.
I just want to extend a thank you to State Senator Dan Lowers. We have the opportunity to have a meet and greet with him on February 8th, and he had some good discussions on road repairs in the state, as well as auto insurance rates and his plans on that. He also said at the end, he provided his direct contact information, and said he was willing to speak with anyone directly, and any concerns at any time, which was nice to hear. And then I also want to give kudos to the Elginak and Clay Community Foundation for the Gala. It was a great time.
Mr. O'Ngannan?
I feel like our township has made stronger today, so I'm very appreciative of the new hires. Um, I would like to also remind people real briefly that this is the winter season, furnace filters still get clogged. I checked mine the other day, it was a mess, so they should be changed every six months. If not, it costs you a lot of money, and it costs you inefficient air. That's all.
Was that furnace filter?
Yeah.
Good. Chrissy? How, how'd the last day of tax collection go with this?
I think 2018 has gone pretty well.
Good.
I wanna remind everyone that the last day to pay the 2018 summer or winter taxes at our township offices is February 28th, and after that date, you would have to contact St. Clair County. I wanna say congratulations to our new hires, and I'm happy to hear that we are going to be reviewing some policies that I think need review. I'm pleased to hear that that's gonna happen in March, and I look forward to that.
Good, thank you. Um, I just wanna say congrats to the new hires also. Welcome aboard, and, um, we'll be, we're gonna have a lot of discussion about high water around, well, our township. Clay Township has about 140 miles of shoreline, believe it or not. FEMA gave me that number with all the islands and rivers and canals and everything, so it's definitely a significant part of our township, and that's why I pay so much attention to it, and, and we bring FEMA here, they're coming from Maryland and Chicago for this, the workshop meeting, and, uh, hopefully we can get some sand, and free sand and sandbags. We gotta have the sandbags, but I think unfortunately, we may need it this year. And yeah, the, the Gala, the Elginak Clay Foundation put on, and full disclosure, I'm the chairman of that group, it was a success. We, we made about $7,200 for the, um, for the cause that night, and everyone had fun. And just so you know, all that money stays in either Elginak or Clay. Uh, we give it away for scholarships and grants to mostly the local charities. Last year, the police department got $5,000 for their hunter safety program that they do for free, and bought some software and a gun simulator for them.
Attorney General Bill Greathop is going to be leading our slow roll with his newly acquired bicycle?
He thinks. But, uh, and, and actually, uh, this year, we, we always have a single de mile, single de mile fundraiser where we give the money away, and we always tell, we're gonna give close to $25,000 away tonight in grants and, and, uh, scholarships. Well, it, our, our fee, our, our number got added up, it went up, and I'm proud to say it's gonna be, we're gonna give way up to $27,700.
Nice.
And how it works, all the money that we raise, it stays in a pot, and we just give the interest away, so the money we raise will go, be going to our, and that builds and builds, as the number goes up. And, uh, so the money we raise at every event will go towards grants and scholarships, you know, in the next year, five years, 10 years, 100, 200 years from now. So it's way cool to, to give back to our community, so. That's all I have to say for that. So a little community foundation commercial.
Did anybody win a Charleston contest over at that game?
Not me. Definitely not, not me. Yeah, yeah. But no bones were broken, no one had to go to the ER. No, it was, it was good. Okay, next meeting is March 4th, and, uh, hearing the whole, entertain a motion to chief.
Motion to chief.
Soon. All in favor, I don't have to ask. Thanks for coming, everybody.